Okay. Call the April 28th meeting to order. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, one God.
Okay, thank you, everyone. First order of business is approval of the regular meeting on March 24th minutes.
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
Any questions?
Aye.
Motion carries. Second item on the agenda, correspondence. We have no correspondence. We have no request for public comment. Is there anyone in the public that's on this meeting that would like to comment? Hearing none. Excuse me?
No hands raised, Dr. Pilata.
Thank you. Item number six, consent agenda. You want to entertain a motion?
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Mr. Marciano, seconded by Mr. De Silva. Any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven, superintendent's report. Mr. Gojo.
Thank you, Dr. Pilata. Before I go through the superintendent's report, I'd like to just acknowledge the retirements that you just approved in the consent agenda. We're losing a great deal of valuable service time and great, very talented employees, so I'd just like to recognize them. Holly Karosi, science teacher at North Providence High School. Joan Oster, school nurse teacher at McGuire. Joanne Smith, paraprofessional at Ritchie Middle School. Judy Cambio, speech language pathologist at McGuire. Patricia King, business teacher, class advisor at North Providence High School, effective December 31st. Wendy Lucas, paraprofessional, Ritchie Middle School. And Joyce Federici, grade one teacher at Steven Only School. So I'd like to congratulate all the retirees and wish you abundant health and good luck in the future. And thank you for your outstanding service to the students and families in North Providence.
And on behalf of the school committee, we congratulate all those seeking retirement. Enjoying GoHo. Thank you for your service for all the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Pilata. The next item is not an item on the agenda, but as you know, I sent the entire school committee an email that I received late this morning from the Community College of Rhode Island, the Lincoln Campus. So we're very excited that we were able to secure an outdoor venue and a date for the high school graduation for this school year. It'll be June 12th, which is a Saturday, at 10:00 a.m. So we're very happy that we were able to do that and can provide an in-person and safe graduation ceremony for our students. So the Community College of Rhode Island is asking that the liability in the contract form, liability form and contract be approved as soon as possible so that we can secure the date and the venue. And so I had to send that out to the committee, as you know, today, last minute, which I apologize for, but I thought it was important in this situation to get that approval. So Attorney Scangio has reviewed the document, as had the trust. And so the document is ready to go. And I'm going to ask the school committee for a motion to approve it. And before we do that, I'll just ask Attorney Scangio to advise the committee as to how we are able to do this, considering it's not listed on the agenda.
Wait, item on the agenda. Oops, I guess I need to...
We can hear you, Ben. Oh, we lost you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
This is a Verizon commercial. So, given the fact that we had information that we will very likely lose our spot and we won't have another place to have a graduation in a healthy and open environment. And under the COVID rules, I think this would qualify as an emergency. So I think it would give the committee the right, even though it wasn't listed on the agenda, to vote on it. Out of an abundance of question, I just also suggest that we reconfirm that vote at our next committee meeting. But given the fact that we have to act quickly, I think it makes sense for us to do that tonight.
Okay, so there's a recommendation on the floor by the superintendent. We need to take the formal vote tonight and also in May, Ben?
Yes, I would revote in May.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion on Mr. Gojo's recommendation. Mr. Pollak? For a second? Are there any questions?
Just, I just have one question. So why do we got to do it again in May?
Anybody objects because it wasn't put on the agenda? We'd have an additional basis to say, well, okay, it wasn't on the agenda, so the public didn't get much notice, but they did subsequently if they wanted to give any input in it.
So then we do it again in May. Okay, I get you. I understand.
Yeah, we would list it as an agenda item in May.
Okay, I get you. So it doesn't look like we're trying to backdoor anything.
Do the best we can in the circumstances that we have.
Lock up the date.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
And Ben, thank you for that. Thank you for being available today to help us get through that issue on short notice. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Next item is the recognition of the Golden Apple Award recipient that occurred at Wayland Elementary School. So at this time, I will turn the presentation over to Principal Amanda Donovan.
Hold on, Superintendent, I'll let her in.
Okay, Amanda.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Good evening, Chairman Pilata and members of the school committee. I'm pleased to share with you that Tina Travato, a Wayland educator, was a Golden Apple Award recipient this past March. She is an intensive academic support teacher at our school, and she was nominated by two parents, Marisa Morozowicz and Gina Falco. And she's so deserving of this honor and recognition. The environment that she has created and developed in her classroom is focused, it's structured, and student-centered. And until recently, Mrs. Travato actually taught remotely this year, and she has done a phenomenal job balancing in-person and distance learning for her students. I visit her classroom all the time, and one of the most important things that I see and hear all the time is laughter. And we all know when children are having fun, they're engaged and motivated to learn. And she has built this culture of engagement and hard work for her students. Milestones and growth look different in every child, and Ms. Travato really lives and applies this every single day in her instruction. And during my tenure in North Providence, I have seen her students flourish and grow in such remarkable ways. She provides individualized instruction that's exciting and fun. And she's also, you know, really provided this individualized instruction that also helps students gain skills in their own way. With many of her students working remotely this year, she's also attempted to find strategies to make learning meaningful. She will contact me and say, I need to drop students, I need to drop supplies off at students' homes. She's very, very passionate about creating her lessons. So she just wants to make sure every child access what they need. It's really admirable. Ms. Travato is one of the many outstanding educators that we have here in North Providence, and I'm just honored to share and be able to celebrate her accolades and accomplishments with you today. Congratulations to Mrs. Travato. Wayland is so proud of you.
Congratulations, Mrs. Travato. On behalf of the school committee, we certainly congratulate you, and we have a citation for you, which I would like to read at this time. It says, "The Town of North Providence School Committee Citation. Be it hereby known to all that the North Providence School Committee hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Tina Travato for receiving the NBC 10 and Rhode Island Department of Education's Golden Apple Award. Entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success proposed the 28th day of April 2021. Signed by myself and Superintendent Gojo." Congratulations to you, Mrs. Travato. Excellent job. Thank you for your service, and thank you for your commitment, and thank you for your loyalty. And thank you for your skills in transferring those skills to the students. That's certainly greatly appreciated. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Is Mrs. Travato on?
Yes, Dr. Pilata, she is on.
Well, we certainly would welcome you for any comments, Mrs. Travato. Have a Ralph?
She's there. Her video's there. There's no voice, though.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I see you. Mrs. Travato?
Yes.
There you go.
Would you?
Can you hear me now?
Would you like to make any comments?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Pilata and the members of the North Providence School Committee, Mr. Gojo, and Mrs. Donovan. I am so grateful to work at Wayland. It's, Mrs. Donovan is very supportive and provides me with all of the materials or whatever I need to make my classroom very successful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Gojo.
Thank you, Dr. Pilata. I just would like to mention one thing. We have another retirement that came in late this week, and I neglected to mention on the list of retirees, Gail Boyce, another longtime outstanding educator in North Providence, who's a grade two teacher at McGuire, who also submitted her retirement, which you guys approved under the consent agenda. So again, congratulations and thank you for your service to Mrs. Joyce as well. Next item on the agenda is the recognition of the North Providence High School Boys Swim Team Division and State Championship. And at this time, I will turn the presentation over to the swim coach, Crystal Bozignian and Steve Muccino.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Superintendent Gojo, and thank you, School Committee Chair Dr. Pilata and all other members of the school committee for having us this evening. As stated, I am the Cougar Swim Team's head coach, Crystal Bozignian, and our assistant swim coach, Steve Muccino, is also here tonight, as well as, or at least I hope, members of our championship boys swim team and their families. On behalf of the coaching staff, I thank you all, as well as our principal, Kristen McGill, and the entire administrative team, our athletic director, Glenn Williams, for their support and guidance in a very difficult and different and challenging winter sports season. Before we honor each swimmer, I want to commend them all for their maturity and dedication to keeping everyone healthy this season, having fun together, and winning a state championship in a very unconventional season. The boys swim team captured our program's ninth championship. It was our first in Division Two. We have been in Division Two for the past six years, and so we've been building the program and very happy to have had such success in a higher division now. But the journey was different this year. Instead of competing against 10 teams in one really crowded, long meet, we entered a single-elimination playoff bracket that's very similar to all other sports. But that did require that we had to win three dual-meet victories in a row. Fortunately, we were the top seed and preserved our undefeated season by ending the season 10-0 with the championship. At the championship meet on March 6th, the boys defeated Westerly High School 54 to 40 and had some incredible swims. The team had seven first-place finishes out of the 11 total events. First-place gold medals were earned by the 200 medley relay team of Jaden Ortiz, Jason Kudish, Taj Webby, and Tony Azaveto. Jason Kudish won the gold in the 200-yard freestyle event. Tony Azaveto in the 50 freestyle. Taj Webby in the 100 fly. Jaden Ortiz in the 500 free and 100 back. And the 200 free relay, which included Oscar Camacho, Nicholas Camacho, Tony Azaveto, and Jason Kudish also won the gold. A special shout-out to our captain, Tony Azaveto, who was undefeated in the 50 freestyle individual event all season long, and that made him the fastest in this event in all of Division Two. So congratulations to Tony. At this time, Steve and I would like to introduce to all of you the 2021 Boys Division Two State Champions. And they are Senior Captain Tony Azaveto, Junior Matthew Burke, Senior Neil Brookoli, Sophomore Nicholas Camacho, Junior Oscar Camacho, Senior Captain Jeffrey Catoya, Senior Captain Vincent Catoya, Sophomore Dominic Intriary, Senior Captain Jason Kudish, Freshman Jaden Ortiz, Sophomore Nikandro Pistachio, Senior Sahil Putwala, and Sophomore Taj Webby. All of these swimmers are talented young men who treat one another like family and are polite, humble gentlemen to coach. It has been a special season, and they have brought Steve and me, their families themselves, and the Town of North Providence a lot of joy during a challenging year. Thank you to the school committee again for your time this evening, and congratulations to these student athletes. We wish our seniors all the best in the future, and we look forward to next season with our returning swimmers. So again, thank you all very much for having us this evening. I know that we are receiving citations, and I'm happy to announce that we will be having an in-person award ceremony at the Overlook at Camp Meon on May 11th. So our team will get to be together, and I will be giving those citations along with our own team awards on that night. So you're all more than welcome to attend. We will be at the Overlook at Camp Meon on May 11th at 5:30 p.m. The swimmers have been invited with two guests. And I, again, thank you guys for, you know, continuing to support our swim program. We've come together a lot this year, so that's exciting for the swim program in general. So again, thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Bozignian. Would you like to add anything?
I did not speak as well as Crystal with all this stuff. We're just really proud of everybody, but we're also very thankful for the town and the school committee for really working together, because in November, or even earlier than that, in October, when we were thinking about, when Crystal and I were thinking about swimming and just how that was going to work with the global pandemic, not many towns were focused on opening pools. We're one of three districts in the state that have town-run facilities, and we're the only district that opened up a pool in time to get the swimmers, the student athletes, in. So it really shows, you know, where our focus is and how dedicated we are to our student athletes and the small amount of the community members that actually want to swim in North Providence. So thank you again, and we're just really, really proud of this group of guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mucino. On behalf of the school committee, we certainly congratulate you, Ms. Bozignian and Mr. Mucino, for your loyalty and your commitment to the program. I know it's been a very challenging and difficult season. It was a very successful season, 10-0. Well-deserved congratulations and achievement. The school committee has a citation for each of the boys. I'll read one of the citations, and then I will give the citations to Ms. Bozignian. "Town of North Providence School Committee Citation. Be it hereby known to all that the North Providence School Committee hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to..." and it lists the student's name. "Division Championship and Rhode Island State Championship, Division Two Boys Swim Team. Entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success proposed the 28th day of February 2021. Signed by myself and Mr. Gojo." Was it February that you completed the season?
March 6th was the championship, but yeah.
That's why these are dated in February, just to notify the public of that. Once again, congratulations.
I can change the date, Dr. Pilata, if you want me to. I can change it to today's date if you want me to.
Yeah, we'll leave that up to the coaches and see what they want to do. But certainly on behalf of the school committee again, we congratulate you on your season, on the state championship. Congratulate all the students for their hard work and dedication. And once again, it's very pleasing to know that we're able to get teachers within our own system to coach our students. That's such a huge advantage, and we all appreciate that. Thank you very much for that, and thank you for your service. Any other member would like to make any comments? Hearing none. Once again, congratulations to all of you and your students. Next item.
Thanks, Crystal and Steve. Thank you, Dr. Pilata. The next item on the agenda is the yearly approval of the Rhode Island Student Assistance Services contract. The state provides funding for a student assistance counselor at the high school. They have done so for as long as I've been in the district, and so it's a very valuable service to our students. And I would ask the school committee to, once again, as we do every year, approve the contract contained in your packet.
A motion made by Mr. Andreozzi, seconded by Mr. Marciano. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item D.
Thank you, Dr. Pilata. Next item is a budget update. As you have in your packet, you've received a letter from our finance director, Lisa Casinelli, who is unable to be at this meeting this evening. But the purpose of the memo was to publicly inform you that we are projecting some overruns in three lines of the budget. A lot of it is COVID-related. The out-of-district special education tuition line, the contracted nursing services line, and the statewide transportation mandatory increase, totaling an overrun that we are projecting at this point of approximately $280,000. And so we are obligated, once we are projecting that kind of overrun, that we need to notify the school committee. And then once we do that, we have a certain amount of time under the law to notify the town and then to develop a deficit reduction plan, which we hope to have to you at an upcoming meeting prior to the end of the school year. So the purpose of this update is just to publicly inform you of financial status at this time.
Mr. Marciano?
Yes. Joe, I have a question. Do we have any idea how we're going to do on federal monies going to schools?
Well, it's, we know that there is federal COVID relief money that is coming to both schools and the municipality. We've received some general information about it, but we have not received any specificity in terms of exactly how much in each of the federal acts, the S2 and then the S3. We've not received exact specificity as to how much, and we've not received any specific guidance. We do know that a large portion of the funding is going to be to address learning loss that occurred for our students during the pandemic. And we've developed interventions and new programs for a period of time to catch up our students on that learning loss, and also some COVID-related, any facility enhancements that need to be done. We had a superintendent's call on Tuesday, and the commission, it was very clear that the federal funding is not for operational budget and is not to supplant anything that's already contained in your operational budget, and they're going to be issuing some sort of legal guidance on that and from the federal government soon. So I hope that answers your question. So we're still waiting at this point.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, I'd like to just have a quick comment on the budget update. As you recall, last year, I believe we were level-funded again. We've actually been level-funded the last five out of seven years. And we approved cuts in the budget last year. In order to balance the budget, one of those cuts were made in special education tuition. Also, as you may recall, the town council put aside approximately $400,000 that if we needed to use that money, we could apply for it. So without objection, I plan to write a letter to the town council informing them of the potential deficits of 280 and also the cost of the boiler at Wayland, ask them to fund that. So I'm going to approach them to utilize a portion of the $400,000 that has been set aside for us. Without objection, I will write that correspondence to the town council. If anyone objects to that, feel free to comment, please. Thank you.
Dr. Pilata, if I could just add, you're correct. Each of the last two years, we had requested of the town approximately a million dollars, give or take, and we were level-funded. And when we reconciled the budget to that number, a large portion each of the last two years to reconcile the budget was in the out-of-district tuition line. And Mrs. Van Avery and her staff have done a tremendous job bringing those numbers down, but we're at the point now of really, you know, no return in terms of the number of students that are in the district that are showing significant need. Probably a lot of it exacerbated by the pandemic, but we need to make sure that we educate those students in the appropriate environment. And it has become necessary over the last several months to place students out of district that we had been trying to keep in the district. So she's done a phenomenal job bringing down the numbers, but we've had an uptick of about six or seven students recently, and, you know, she, we can't perform miracles. So, and we do have an obligation to educate our students in the appropriate environment. So you are correct about that. That special ed out-of-district line has undergone a lot of duress and just cannot take on any more water. The other issue is, you make a good point, which I forgot about. The other unexpected expense that should be included in that is the boiler at Wayland, which has to be replaced prior to the beginning of the school year next year, and that's approximately another, an additional $80,000 for that as well. So thank you for making that point.
Thank you. Next item, item E.
Yes, next item on the agenda.
I was also going to mention the mold at Ritchie. That was not resolved. We went back and forth with that. That was not resolved either. We had asked them to use some, maybe it was surplus money, whatever, to take care of that. So I think it was two budget years in a row that we put those set-asides in for the special ed and whatever needs. So it did not affect our level of funding, but it's set aside, and we should use it for what it's set aside for, and that would be for those, that boiler tuition increase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilata. So the next item on the agenda, just to reorient the school committee on this. So prior to the pandemic, we had contracted the Equity Institute, which is led by Carla Vigil, who has done a tremendous amount of important work all around the state and around the New England area. So we had been one of the first districts to contract her. We had begun professional development with our staff, and we had planned an audit, starting at the elementary level, so that we could assess whether or not, you know, as a district, we were doing everything that we possibly could to ensure an equitable and inclusive educational experience for all of our students and all of our families. And then the pandemic hit, which kind of put all of that work on hold. However, Ms. Vigil and her organization were able to conduct the audit of our elementary program and some of our district policies and our curriculum. And so we are in receipt of that report, and we are inviting her back this evening to give the school committee in the community sort of a high-level overview of some of her findings and the direction that that organization is recommending for us. And we will continue to partner with the Equity Institute to address many of the recommendations and the findings in her report. So at this time, I would like to turn the presentation over to Ms. Vigil.
All right. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
All right, and my team members are joining in. So I will start. Thank you, Joe, for introducing us, and good evening to everybody. We appreciate you having us here and welcoming us into your space. We're excited to be here in community with your school, with the school committee. Our goal for the next 20 minutes or so is to share with you all the final results from the root cause equity analysis. And before we start, we want to introduce ourselves and give you a little bit more of our background. So we're going to go ahead, and we have a mini, we're going to project a mini presentation that we have for you all, and just to really remind you of who we are and why we're here, because it's been a long time. And I don't know how you all feel, but I've definitely have lost track of time and have forgotten many things. So we're going to go ahead and move to the slide. Yeah, we'll introduce ourselves. So my name is Carla Vigil. I am the Chief Executive Officer of the Equity Institute, based here in Providence, Rhode Island. We're an education-based organization, nonprofit. We're an education-based organization, nonprofit, and we work mostly with institutions and districts to develop and implement innovative solutions for building a more diverse, equitable, and inclusive learning and professional environments. My background includes working in education at, in different capacities. I've worked specifically with a focus and a lens on equity, multicultural education, and social justice education. I'm a former classroom teacher, fourth grade, and I've spent a lot of time developing frameworks and tools to support culturally responsive teaching and equity in education. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and pass it to my colleague Caitlin, who will take a few seconds to introduce herself.
Thanks, Carla. Good evening, North Providence. It's so nice to be with you this evening. My name is Caitlin Moran, and I'm a partner here at Equity Institute. I have been a teacher, administrator, and teacher-coach for the last 12 years. I have degrees from Boston University, Brown University, and Harvard University. My specialty is in designing learning experiences for all students and adults with a specific lens towards access and equity for immigrant students and English learners. And I will pass it to my colleague Katia to introduce herself.
Thank you, Caitlin. Can you hear me well? I see a thumbs up. Well, as much as everyone, my name is Katia Rodriguez, and I'm also a partner here at Equity Institute. I serve in multiple districts of various capacities, from leading after-school programs, working in operations roles. And I shifted to the research side when I realized my fascination for data storytelling. And I have degrees from University of Leverne and Brown University. And here at the I, I primarily focus on the research and evaluation side, where I design our research projects with intentionality and an equity lens. And I'm very excited to be here with you tonight.
All right, thank you, Katia. So we're going to go ahead and ground ourselves by going over our purpose. You all might remember, might not remember, like I said, it's been a long time since I presented to you initially to talk about this audit. And what we're calling it is a root cause equity analysis. Equity Institute has had the privilege to work with your district for some time now in facilitating a few trainings for teachers and leaders within the district. It is clear that your leaders are committed to equity, diversity, inclusion, and have been on a path to ensure that North Providence community has the right information to create actionable solutions in order to meet the needs of all students. So over a period of seven months, from October 2020 to April 2021, North Providence has trusted our organization to conduct this process. It's been a really comprehensive one, and you're going to learn more about that in a few minutes. It's been a community center one that has really worked to assess where you all are in terms of DEI, specifically to your policies and practices. We've engaged a wide range of community members to hear different ways people describe their perceptions, their experiences, and hopes associated with the school district. Here at our, at our organization, we believe in people power data, so people hold that data and they have this knowledge. And we also really emphasize the power of voice to build and reimagine what we want our education to be in our communities. Our goal here was to build awareness and to hopefully galvanize the school and district leaders and community members to move towards collection action, and we're going to be going over some recommendations that we have for you all. And with that, we are going to go ahead and just quickly go over the process, because I went over the process when we started initially back at the end of 2019. We've refined the process. So I have this visual here. I'm not going to read everything on here just for the sake of time, but I will say that it was a very process with intentionality and a process that was driven by people. So at every point, we connected with community stakeholders to not only design the instruments to create the sample design, but we've, we've talked to parents, to youth, to teachers, to principals, to non-teaching members all throughout our process in order to ensure that all voices are included, and we really capture a robust understanding of how people experience different areas related to DEI. So you can go ahead and, you know, view the process here. We went through a discover and design phase, and then that moved to a connect and refine, and that's where we really are finalizing the instruments we're using. The collecting and analyzing was the really, the chunk of the work and taking the work and synthesizing it so that we're understanding what's happening. And we're finally at this, this end part of the process where we're reporting. This is, this is the first time we're sharing these findings. You are the first people here, hearing the results. But we do have plans to share this, the results with your community members, and we will be presenting to them along with each of, each school. So we'll be visiting each school for an hour to really unpack the data in a deeper way and for a longer period of time. With that, I'm going to pause for a second. What we have in store for you is to go over the methodologies we used, the findings, recommendations, and so we're going to just pause in certain spaces just to see if there are any questions from the school committee members. And if we don't have questions, then we're going to go ahead and move to the next part, which is our methodologies.
Great. Thank you so much for that, Carla. So now, like Carla mentioned, we're reviewing the methodology we used throughout the entire process. We collected qualitative and quantitative data through a combination of surveys and focus groups with community stakeholders at the elementary level. So this means that it was only those five elementary schools in your district. This included K through five students, families, teachers, staff members, and principals. We also conducted a content analysis for your curriculum materials in domain two and organization of policies in domain three, which we'll explain later what the domains refer to. In the following slides, we're going to be going over each method in detail. As Carla mentioned earlier, we value community, community voice, so we designed this process to incorporate stakeholders in the research design phase. We do this by holding what we call community feedback sessions. During this time, we met with several key members of the community to get feedback on survey items, so that is questions or statements within the survey, to ensure that they were clear, accessible, and relevant prior to administering the surveys to all of the community. This step was included to establish the survey's validity, which validity means that our instruments were designed to accomplish its intended goal of identifying the root causes in your district. We also did this to ensure reliability, which means that if another organization was to conduct a similar project in your district, their findings would be essentially the same as ours. As a result of these sessions, we modified some of the items, including changing language around repair of harm, curriculum, and race and culture. We found that participants were more interested in discussing survey items related to student leadership opportunities and perceptions of belonging as they relate to race, ethnicity, and gender. As you can see in the survey, sorry, in the figure on the screen, we included the key highlights, which are that we, throughout November, from November 2020 to February 2021, we conducted surveys. They included a total of 260 items for all groups combined. The figure shows a number of responses we receive from stakeholders across our elementary schools. So if you can see, the first row shows the number of responses we receive for students in each school. That is Centerdale 35, Greystone 51, and so on. And we did the same throughout all stakeholders. To protect participants' confidentiality, we weren't able to report any time we received 10 responses or less for any group, so those are marked with asterisks on this screen. This slide shows the demographic breakdown of all student response, survey respondents. The first figure shows the survey takers were predominantly female. As you can see, all the blue little people highlighted, then followed by males at 24% and a few non-binary respondents. The second figure, we see that approximately 60% of stakeholders identified as white, with the next largest ethnicity being Latinos, 13.5%, and then followed by mixed-race individuals at 8.2%. For overall survey takers, we found that students and parents were significantly more racially diverse than educators. And among educators, the non-teaching staff was more racially diverse than teachers and school principals. For focus groups, we conducted a total of 30 virtual focus groups from October to February 2021. And we had a total of 134 participants. As you can see on the figure on top, on their participant overview, you can see how many people in each stakeholder group we were involved in the community and the focus groups. The bottom figure shows a participant's demographic breakdown, which once again shows that most participants identify as white. And the other two figures show that 14% of all focus group attendees spoke Spanish, and 90% of participants identified as female. The Spanish is an important reasoning because we have some focus groups in Spanish as well to accommodate the North Providence community needs. So as mentioned earlier, I talked about domains, what are domains? So here we are. Because, as Carla mentioned, this was a comprehensive process, we partnered with an organization in California called Data for the People, where additional researchers came and helped us develop a codification system to make sure that our data makes sense and that it was what the community needed. So after examining the data, we code our responses to four main domains, as you can see in each square on the screen. And then there are several themes identified in relation to each one. And all of this was in service of identifying the root causes of the district equity gaps. On the screen, you can see which themes were associated with each domain. And now let you read those on your own. These domains were used to categorize contents on both a micro and macro level. As you can see on this figure, domains one and two focus on school and classroom practices, and domain three and four examine district-wide practices and policies and processes. And now we are also going to pause again. I've been talking a lot, so we're going to give you some time to reflect on that and ask any questions, if you have anything.
I have one question. Any one of the young ladies, the percentages that you're showing us, are they, are they pretty much in line with other urban ring communities?
Are you talking about the respondent, participants who are in the focus groups and surveys?
Yes.
I would say that they reflect your community, the North Providence community, as far as being in line of the other urban communities. We cannot confirm or deny that just yet.
Yeah, I think, Dr. Palata, you want us to compare. I mean, I, one of the things that's in the full report is what we're noticing is that your community is growing in terms of diversity in many different areas. So I would say what, what your, what the district reflects is a lot of growth in in diversity, and that is, I think, comparable with other districts such as perhaps East Providence. I don't have that data in front of me, but I can, I can speak and say that we've seen, we've worked with other districts that are showing similar increase of their population and demographics.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. So with that, we're going to go ahead and move to the domains, so you can hear the, more about the recommendations, which I think, I think are the important part here, too.
Thanks, Katia and Carla. Let's dive into the data. This is the exciting piece, I guess. So we're going to start, we're going to go over this domain by domain, starting with domain one. So as Katia said, domain one really looks at school climate and culture, and within that, there are certain themes. So one of the first themes that participants were really interested to know about in the community feedback sessions was belonging. Belonging included a series of measures from both surveys and focus groups. And overall, most stakeholders felt safe, and they feel like they belong at school. Many staff noted that they would recommend working at North Providence to a colleague. White staff and teachers, their ratings were consistently multiple percentage points higher than the ratings from staff and community respondents of color. That could indicate a lack of trust or the lack of a shared connection between white stakeholders and Black Indigenous people of color in the community, both internally and externally. Interestingly, teachers' lowest ratings were in belonging for the question asked if students feel valued at school for their racial and ethnic identities. This indicates to us that teachers know there is important work to do in ensuring that all students feel fully included in the community. And as your population of English learners is also growing, it's important to note that this feeling of belonging or disbelonging can really be compounded not only by race, but also by English language acquisition status. As we talk through the second theme in domain one, that, that theme is anti-bias and anti-racism. This presents a really exciting opportunity for growth in your district. For example, there was a 27% difference between teachers and staff in their agreement on how they reflect on their biases at work. When asked how they, as teachers, bring their identity into the classroom, many teachers did not directly engage with this question, and those who did didn't talk about race. So in order to begin to do this work of building more equitable communities in your school, the first thing, the first suggestion in our report is really to enlist the entire school community in doing this work, to build this culture centered on equity. And that's why we're so excited to kick this off with you tonight. By building this broad base of support, this work will flourish, and we really think that you have the opportunity to build capacity throughout the district and build the foundation for long-term change. Another early step to really enhance this work and to build the capacity to do this work is to develop and implement a strategic plan that encompasses the concrete actions the district will take for at least the next five years. Strategic plans, as I'm sure you know, allow organizations to grow in ways that are aligned to their values, their mission, their priorities. Many of the recommendations that we find in this report would be tangible steps to include in a strategic plan. Katia, let's talk about domain two. So domain two focuses on classroom systems and practices. As a former teacher, this domain was very exciting for me to do the work in and to learn more about what your school is already doing. There's increasing awareness among all stakeholders that the need for learning related to educational and racial equity is there. People are ready and they're eager to learn. And this shows that you have significant staff investment to do this work. However, there is currently 33% disparity between teachers and principals in how classroom cultural representation looks, feels, and sounds like in the classroom. Many teachers noted that they felt uncomfortable talking about race and race-related issues at school, and that these conversations were best left at home. This presents a wealth of opportunity to reimagine your teaching and learning. In the report, we've cited many tools and examples. And the first thing we recommend is to provide training for staff and how to build their competence in culturally responsive teaching. The research is clear, and we've included lots of research in the report, both in, in the report itself and in the reference section for you to read more about. But the research is really clear on how and when students begin to develop and identify their own understanding of self, their understanding of difference. And these lessons are absolutely appropriate and necessary for elementary school students. We provide many resources to help teachers know what an equitable and culturally responsive classroom looks, feels, and sounds like. As we move into domain three, this is where we kind of get into that bigger, that macro level that Katia was talking about. So domain three focuses on class, on school systems and practices. This is a domain that has a lot of information in it. One of the things community stakeholders were excited to learn about with student leadership. This is in domain three, and we provide some recommendations on how to build authentic capacity for students to become true leaders as early as elementary school. And the bulk of domain three really revolves around policies and processes, which I'm sure there are some people here who are quite interested in as well. So as we talk about policies and processes, we were able to examine 12 of the district's policies as found on your website. We looked at them with a lens towards diversity, equity, inclusion, and agency, how they allow different community stakeholders to interact with each other or with the system. And in the report, we recommend different ways for you to audit, modify, and publish these policies so that everyone in the district is aware of the policies that the district holds. We also, in doing this work, we completely recognize that we're, we're not there, right? And so the policies, as we read them, they are, could be different than the policies are experienced in school. And so one of our recommendations is to find that middle ground between how the policy is written, how the policy is lived, and being able to communicate that, the reality, to all stakeholders in the community, ideally in a public way through your website. And finally, in domain four. Domain four focuses on the school and district partnership. And as much as COVID-19 has disrupted things, COVID-19 has actually led to increased and more robust communication between students and families in the district. Currently, there are numerous ways for families to engage with and communicate with the school, and every stakeholder group identified this as a strength. And this really provides an opportunity for you all to build from as you consider ending the year and moving into reopening plans for next year. This domain also addresses This domain also addresses systemic inequities and systemic factors that underlie not just your district, but most districts. As, as we know. And so one of the ways that we recommend you prioritizing equity work is to enlist all stakeholders in the community in doing this work. In order to build community representation through your school district, Katia, can you go to the next slide? One of the things we recommend is looking at and revisiting your, the makeup of teachers and staff that you begin to hire into the district. This chart on your screen shows the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty data for the number of students and staff of color in school. As you can see, the number of students of color has increased, while the number of staff of color has stayed pretty flat. And so one of the things we recommend is this is an area for, for real consideration and movement building as you look to implement all of the many recommendations and exciting things that we were able to find and analyze in the Root Cause Equity Analysis Report. And I will pause there for questions.
I have one, one question.
Of course.
On the domain four, on the recommendations, last recommendation, it says dismantle and re-envision existing committees that do not represent the community. What do you mean specifically by that?
Yeah, that's a great question. One of the things we found in our surveys and in our focus groups was that there, and even in looking at the policies, is that some policies indicated that there should be representation from all parts of the community. And in the surveys and focus groups, the, the, the kind of idea rose as important that those existing committees do not always reflect North Providence as it is now, that there is room for more diverse parent voice, more diverse family voice, and different opportunities for people who have not historically been involved in the district to be involved in, in implementing these recommendations and perhaps adding their voice to existing committees.
I, I agree with that, but most of the committees are volunteer committees.
Yeah, so one of the, as you'll see on the report, one of the things we talk about is finding perhaps ways for people to be involved by varying the schedule so that meetings are not always at the same time, so that families who are on different schedules could be involved differently. Having public agendas and public notes so that people can prepare in advance to come to a meeting or having subcommittees or things that people could do outside of the traditional meeting times that they could still be involved in the work of the committee.
Very good, thank you for that.
Of course. All right, I will give it back to you Carla if there's no more questions.
I, I, I just, Carla, you gonna, are you finishing or?
Wait, who, I can't see who's speaking, Gina, hi Gina. Yes, we are pretty much done, we do, we do have the full report here Gina. So definitely if you have a question, you can ask, I just wanted to share this screen. You can literally put your phone up to the QR code and it will take you to the full report. Or you can use the Bitly link and put it in your URL and that will also take you to the full report. And I think a lot of questions that you may have, though, though, you'll have more understanding of the whole process and the findings in the report. We didn't want to share it now, it's, it's about really fifty-three pages with some, the rest of the pages be including references and appendices. So we show you the questions that we use, very, it's a very transparent report as well.
Thank you for that very comprehensive and informative report.
I just want to give Gina the, I think she had a question.
Yes.
Well, actually, and I don't know if it starts off with the color, but maybe more to Lieutenant Goho and Assistant Lieutenant Sight Singer. My wonder is, you know, I, I think this is the exact work we need to be doing. Why, maybe why only elementary school? And if, and is there a plan to, to look at that in middle and high school? And why wouldn't we, only because I'm thinking, we have our largest staff at the high school, right? And then be, be mindful of, I think our student population at the high school would have lots of insight about their own experiences coming through elementary and middle.
I can speak to that, I, can I speak to that?
Absolutely.
I'm happy, and first of all, I want to thank Carla and her team for this very comprehensive, very informative report. And as she said, it's really, to access the full report, you can get us, thank you for doing that Carla, and thank you all for presenting tonight. To answer Mrs. Picard's question, yes, we, we would start, I don't know if you remember when we first started this process with the elementary as a foundation, but our goal is to go to the secondary level next, to do an audit, a comprehensive needs assessment, and to do the same type of work that we're starting here for the whole district.
Yeah, and that, my point is before we make systemic changes, I, I would love more input, especially, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't sure why some staff were under ten in some schools, maybe it was only voluntary and not necessarily. But I do think we need to be mindful of how we use even school-based time on planning, because this data is going to be important. And if, if it's a voluntary survey for staff, we're not going to get a huge representation. And, and I would prefer to make sure we have everybody represented, including parents, right? So I know it's, it's hard, we're all, everyone is, is pushing and pulling. But I do think that at high school, you have many families who have lots of experience with our school system for many, many years. And in our elementary schools, they may, they may just be starting with our district. So it's a good capture of what my first impression is, but I do think that there's, I'm glad we're going into middle and high school. I just hope it's not, it's going to all be sort of work together so that we could sort of see the, the trend, threads, patterns that, that come out, because I do think of one, one easy way for us to be mindful of this work is our school improvement teams. And our leadership teams at the school level. But I would, I would, more, more of this work happening, and I'm glad you said it was, it's going to be moving forward with middle and high.
Yeah, so we are in agreement with that for sure, and I think it's, as you said, really important. So a lot of this work is going to be going and worked at, at the school level through their school improvement teams using the studies. Again, it's, as they said, it's survey data, so it's, it's qualitative, it's not quantitative, and we recognize that. But I think there's a lot, a lot of great information here to start really making some of those impactful changes and, and really thinking about our policies, which we are going to think about. But certainly, it needs to be done at the secondary level as well, because we have to look at it as a whole district, it's not just elementary. But we thought we'd start there as a foundation, because we also, Carla had done some great work with the elementary school, so that's where we started. But just want to thank you again.
I, if I could just also respond Gina, I think that you raised a really important point. One of the thinking behind elementary was really understanding what's happening early on. We know that things can get progressively more challenging as, as children grow older and as they start to form their own perceptions, perceptions and identities, right? They really start to have that voice. So we really wanted to get the root of what's going on early on to then bridge it with the older, older students in the district. And I think in terms of the recommendations, we've, we've done based on what we have now here with, with the group of people that we've engaged with, we have some really solid recommendations that I think are still going to be relevant with the data that we, that we collect when it comes to middle school and high school as well. So I think that goes, it speaks to a part of it, like the, the, the methods that we're using. So if, we've done it right, which I think we have, you know, we will find that the same things will rise, like some similar themes will come up when we go into the middle schools, when we go into the high schools as well. It might be even a little bit more stronger, a little bit more louder is what, what I imagine it may be. And, and I think Caitlin wants to add something.
Go, sorry, I just want to talk briefly on the sample you mentioned earlier Gina. So to answer your question, it was, the focus groups were chosen at random, so it was randomized to ensure non-bias process throughout the research project. As well as COVID was a huge limitation, and I think that because it was virtual, some participants were not as comfortable, or some would join and didn't feel comfortable being recorded, and then they would leave. So it wasn't a voluntary basis, again, because it is research. So I did want to mention that, and Caitlin, you can continue and finish that up, thank you.
Is it, is it part of the review, and I may, may have missed at the beginning, one of the things I worry about is the disparity in discipline. And, and sometimes, you know, the, the, the bias can show sometimes without us recognizing. And when we look through data like that to see how often, how frequent, the duration. But is that some of the data that you're looking at?
Yeah, I can speak a little bit to that. We do, so we examine the discipline policy as it's found in the student handbook. And one of the things we note is that there, there does, we recommend a clear delineation between what is an elementary school discipline procedure and what is a secondary or middle school discipline procedure. And really, especially throughout the report, one of the things you'll see comes back to domain one and that, that idea of belonging and anti-bias and anti-racism. And through quite a, quite a few of the policies, we, we name that there, there needs to be more kind of direct attention to unconscious bias and to, like, and having those trainings and unconscious and implicit biases and for staff, for all the state, for all stakeholders. And so back to the question about the committees and dismantling and reimagining some committees, part of that is some of the committees are left up to, to people who may in themselves have identified that they would like more anti-bias, anti-racism training and determining who becomes a member of those committees. So I think that is one theme that runs through the report. And, and going back to a little bit of what Louise intimated earlier, when she talked about why starting this work in elementary school, when we talk about root causes, right, we're talking about deep, long work. And so really the things that we, we lay out here, we say that if you want to talk about vertically aligning these, these recommendations, to start in elementary school really does make a lot of sense, right? When we talk about, you'll see the curriculum recommendations and the policy recommendations to start that in elementary school would really give students a much more robust experience all the way through. But again, that, that's an eleven, twelve-year process, but being able to start that vertical alignment and build up in some ways does make a lot of sense and be able to implement, like, the policies are the policies for, for all schools. And so being able to implement some of those recommendations throughout the district at the same time is also feasible based on some of the things that we saw in the data.
Any other further comments by any committee members? Thank you very much. Yes.
Dr. Plato, if I can just give a couple of comments as superintendent on this important work, if you don't mind, to, to the Equity Institute to answer the committee. So first of all, I want to thank Carla Vigil and her team. I have read the full report, and I have to say, I, I was pleasantly surprised at the report. The team did a really good job being as thorough as they possibly could, considering the circumstances. And I think that they were able to be very thorough. I was also pleasantly surprised at the data, the indicators, the feedback and the responses from all of our stakeholders. And I was, I keep using the term, but I was pleasantly surprised at the strong building blocks that were cited in the report that are, that are present in North Providence, that show that we really have done a lot of work. Although we know we have work to do, certainly, but it was really noted in that report that we're in a good, we're in a really good place. From a district perspective, I see three areas where our area of responsibility for diversity and, and inclusive education are coming to play. And so that, the first thing is policy, second thing is curriculum, and then the third thing is, is, is the training of the staff. So in the section on policy, Carla mentioned that they reviewed twelve of our policies. And so that was a very timely piece, because as the school committee knows, we are in the midst of a policy review and update. And so they gave some really good suggestions as to some inclusive and diverse, equitable language that we can incorporate as we have begun reviewing policies that haven't been looked at in a while. So that's all very timely, and those policies were scheduled to be coming before the school committee in the next several months. And so now having this feedback on how to incorporate language of equity is going to be even more helpful. I did, I did note, and I think the school committee should be very proud of the fact that two of the policies that the Equity Institute gave very positive indicators to regarding language of inclusivity, of the inclusivity, are the two policies that this school committee developed and implemented, and that is the, the staff hiring policy and also the school improvement team policy. It was noted, and you'll see in the full report, that those two policies were kind of held up as being very strong around language of inclusivity and equity. So that, that's a recommendation for the current school committee. In the area of curriculum, as you know, we have begun under Mr. Sight Singer, a very comprehensive review and revision of our curriculum. And we have to do that in terms of adopting high-quality curriculum for the new state law. So we're in the process, as you know, of updating our science curriculum, and we have some upgrades to do in math and ELA. But if you read the report, you will also see that the current curriculum that is in place was really cited very positively as well for its language of inclusivity and equity. Certainly, they gave us the recommendations in terms of how to bolster that, and so we plan to do that. But as you know, we have to adopt high-quality curricula that are, that are rated by the state. And the good thing about that is that the curriculum that we will be updating through the state and ed reports are all graded highly for their equity and diversity and inclusivity. So I'm very happy about that. And then the, the last piece from a district perspective is, is training. And so I really believe that the, really, the, the biggest bang for our buck will come from an ongoing professional development of all staff, administrators, teachers, parent professionals in the area of culturally responsive classrooms and culturally responsive schools. So that's our plan going forward in terms of how I envision this work and our continued partnership with the Equity Institute. And then, as Carla said, I do expect to see a lot of these themes and a lot of this work making its way up to the middle school and the high school as well. So I just wanted to give that feedback to the Equity Institute in terms of what I read when I read the report this week, and also the committee as well in terms of my overview of findings, and to give you a flavor in terms of where we're going with this.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Goho. One last question. When applying, when the district is applying for grants, we have permission to use the data that's in the report?
Yeah, yes, the data, the data is absolutely yours to use. The one thing you will see in the full report is we do have a Creative Commons licensing agreement. So anything you do use that is the, the intellectual property of Equity Institute, we just ask, we give us credit for, but please do use the data. Carla, if you want to add to that?
Yeah, no, you, you own the data, the data is yours to use. So yeah, that, 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 that is absolutely possible.
Well, once again, thank you very much for this very informative report, job well done, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Plato?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank her and her staff for coming up with this report. I look forward to getting it several weeks.
Thank you.
Any other comments by any other committee members? Okay.
All right, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you again. Next item on the agenda, item number eight, we have no school committee reports, we have no old business. Item number ten, on the new business, I'll turn it over to Mr. Goho.
Thank you, Dr. Plato, in continuing, looking at the policies that have not been updated in the, within the last five years, we will be bringing various policies to you over the next several months. And continuing with the work that we began last month, we would ask a motion to approve of the policies A, B, and C. One, two of them have been updated with some very minor changes. The distribute, the first one is the distribution of, of the community events flyers policy. So I would ask for a motion to approve that policy revision.
Motion by Mr. De Silva?
Second.
Second by Mr. Andriozzi, are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, the next item is the update and the revision of the district attendance policy that we all looked at at the central office, as well as gathered input from our staff and our teachers. So we've made some revisions there as well to update that policy and bring it into compliance with state law as well. So I would ask for a motion to approve the revised attendance policy.
So moved.
Mr. Andriozzi, seconded by Mr. De Silva, any questions?
Just have one. Joe, just a clarification, effective four-twenty, does that mean, and I know there shouldn't be any changes that affect a family, but that if we are doing it as of today, we would, shouldn't, one, shouldn't it be as of tomorrow, just to make sure? I know we're approving it tonight, but effective, it would be effective tomorrow since there's no school. But would we want to wait till next year, or, or does, does it be for us to just do it now? Is there a reason why we wanted defective immediately?
No, I mean, traditionally, that is what has occurred when we approve policies, they've become effective upon approval of the school committee. And, and the date has been listed in terms of its effect being the day of the approval, but we can cer- certainly change it to tomorrow. And yeah, I, I would have no problem implementing it immediately rather than waiting until next year.
Then I just ask that we communicate bluntly to the families so they understand that there's, you know, whatever the changes are that will impact them, that, that it's clear.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, that's a good point Gina, and I will say with the pandemic- And I will say, with the pandemic, we're very flexible with all of our policies, so I, especially the attendance policy. So I, I really don't think, now that I think of it, that implementing it over the last seven or eight weeks of the school year during a pandemic probably is not the wisest way to go. So that's a good point. We would implement this starting next school year.
Okay, yeah. And, and, and that's my point, thinking of, so then my only, so then we want to do the amend, the, the motion for that one change?
Yep.
So I'll make a, a motion to amend the policy with the effective date being for the next school year, the first day of the-
Thank you. Yep, perfect.
Okay, well, there's, there was a motion by Mr. Andriozzi.
But this is an amendment, it would come first, correct? The amendment?
And there was a second, Mr. Silva?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, there's a, on the floor, by Mrs. Picard, is there a second to the amendment?
Second, I'll second it.
Andriozzi, any questions on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Proved, motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion on the policy with, including the amendment.
So moved.
Mrs. Picard, seconded by Mr. Pollack. Any questions on the full policy with the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Proved, motion carries. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? So what am I doing with the first vote? It's, it's no?
No, includes the amendment. We had to vote on the amendment and then include that into the whole policy.
But I had a first and a second by, by Mr. Andriozzi and Mr. De Silva, I'm just not-
Yeah, just regarded that.
Okay.
And Norma Jean, just note the amendment to the policy when we send it out.
I got it.
Okay, thank you. Last item is the yearly review and approval by the school committee of the K kindergarten and early admission policy.
I'll second and then discuss-
Motion by Mr. De Silva, seconded by Mrs. Picard, questions?
It's just more of a clarification, I know we had talked about it last time, but when, because I do think it's important to note when we revise and when we, when it's effective, and, and we did it with the attendance policy, with the kindergarten one, because it's yearly and it says, uh, reviewed yearly, I wasn't sure if, wanted to make sure we noted it at the bottom, so that there was, there's a definite vote. So for example, if it was approved last year at 5/27/2020, to keep in, in the consistency with the last policy, at the bottom, we would say revised 5/27, and then the new revision would be for the 4/28, so we, so we monitor the revisions.
Question to Mr. Goho?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I, I understand what you're saying, Gina, so is, is there a question, or what specifically would you like revised?
Following the, following the same pattern that you did on the first one, so when, at the bottom, it says revised 8/25/10, revised effective 4/20/21, doing the same thing. So if the, this policy first went in, it looks like it was first done, I think it was before that, though, to be honest, the 5/27/20, that we would put the old date and then effective as the new date. So we note when it, when they're actually reviewed and we, and revised and finalized.
Yeah, okay, Norma Jean, do you have that?
But there's no revision on this.
It's up for revision, there's no, there happens to be no changes, correct?
Louise, did you make any, were there any, Louise, were there any changes made to this policy?
No, there's no red-
Sorry, there's no changes, no. We're just updating it following, you know, we're supposed to update it every year. Last year, we did make changes to the assessment piece, there are no changes for this year.
Right, so we don't need-
I think Gina is asking for, just to record it, Gina, maybe, just to make sure I'm understanding you, record that where it's, it was approved-
That it's completed the annual review, right?
Right, okay.
Just put reviewed with the date, right? Okay, okay, there was a motion and a second. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Proved, motion carries. Item number 11, approval of bills. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pollack, seconded by Mr. De Silva. Questions?
I have a question. Discussion.
Mr. Andriozzi.
I just have a question. So we're back to spending a lot of money on paint. Is anyone walking through these schools to make sure that all the work is completed? Because it looks like we bought a lot of paint to paint every single school from Eastern We painted Greystone, Birchwood, Senedale, Birchwood again. It just looks like we bought an awful lot of paint, the high school, $1,700 for the high school. Is, is anyone walking through to make sure that this work is, is complete?
Mr. Faruli, are you on this meeting?
How about is superintendent or?
Well, the expectation is that all directors in, are part of this meeting, and if they're not part of this meeting, they need to notify the superintendent. Is there anyone that can answer the question?
So Dr. Plod, I'm not necessarily informed by Mr. Faruli of the projects that he has. So I see, oftentimes, I see the supplies that were purchased when you see them. And to try to then go back and ask him, well, what projects were these for? And then go back and, and inspect when those projects took place and if they took place. That, that's certainly something that we can do going forward and put a procedure in place for that. But I, I don't, I don't get, I, I don't get a plan or, or, or anything in writing in terms of telling me what projects are occurring at the schools in terms of maintenance or painting or some, some of the types of things that are going on in his department.
I'm more concerned about, can you, when you walk into the schools, can you see that something looks different, something looks cleaner, something looks better? That's, that's what-
Yeah, I, yeah, you mean, yeah, definitely. I mean, you know I'm in the schools frequently, all of the schools, and over the last few years, there has been a lot of painting done, it's, it's noticeable, the schools look great. But to actually put it and connect it to the bills from this month or last month relative to paint that was purchased, and did it go up and where it went up? But my visits to the schools don't necessarily include that, but I can certainly meet with Mr. Faruli and try to get a sense from him as to when purchases like this are made, to let me know, or the findings director know, what they're for, what those projects are, and when they're completed.
Exactly. I mean, one, one of the bills is $1,700 for paint. We spent $1,700 in, I, I, I'm lying. I thought it was $1,700, it's, it's $178. But when you add it all together, I mean, it's quite a lot of money for paint. I just want to be sure that it's being completed, it's being done.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Thank you, I appreciate.
Any other questions or comments? There was a motion by Mr. Andriozzi and Mr. De Silva, seconded that motion to approve the bills. Am I correct?
No.
It was me, Dr. Plod.
Mr. Pollack, the motion?
I, yeah, I made the motion.
To approve?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Mr. De Silva. Is that correct, Norma Jean? Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Proved, motion carries. We have no use of property, we have no request to address the committee-
Can you hear me?
Excuse me? We have no request to address the committee, we have no pending business. Ryan, taking a motion for an adjournment, I, I would just like to, well, inform the committee that I've asked Mr. Goho to speak to Mr. Nahesian regarding face-to-face meeting and-
Yeah, yeah.
Want to make sure that we are capable of providing that and also including the public, so-
Yes, can you hear?
Our plan is to meet face-to-face in June in the library. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Mr. Pollack, seconded by Mr. Andriozzi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Proved, motion carries. Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone. Good night. Thank you. Good night.